I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, June 24th, 2019 City of Warham's regular meeting of council. And first I'll start, does anyone have any announcements? Hearing none from council, I would just like to say this is Karen Jeet's last meeting. Karen Jeet, it's been a pleasure having you sitting around our table. And we wish you all the best. You move forward. Even tomorrow in your big test. Okay, we'll move down to approval of the agenda. Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda for June 24th, 2019.
Do you have a second there for that? Counselor Phil Chuck? All in favor? Moving down to minutes, motion please. Counselor Phil Chuck?
I'd like to make the motion that the minutes from the regular meeting of council held on Monday, June 10th, 2019 be approved and adopted as read.
Do you have a second there for that? Counselor Tulley? Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Moving down to administrations' reports, starting with city manager.
Thank you, worship. I have two reports for council's consideration tonight. Flag protocol policy. Policy was drafted after some previous discussion and comments around the flags that could be used in flowing in the city. And who would be responsible for the replacement of the flags and when the flag should be flown at half-mast, et cetera. Administration gathered a few different policies from around the province and developed the attached draft for consideration. At the May 20th committee of whole meeting, council did ask for an amendment to the draft policy to include that banners must be approved by resolution of council prior to being installed or flown on the city-owned flagpole. And this amendment has been added to the policy, so the recommendation is that the city council adopt the flag policy, protocol policy as presented.
So we've got a motion in front of us. Anyone prepared to make that? Counselor Phil Chuck?
I'll make the motion to adopt the P-41, 2019 Flag Protocol Policy as presented.
Do you have a second there? Counselor Shrum, any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, this year I just wanted to, you know, to say, this year I had spoken to a, to a elected representative in Ontario, and their community actually didn't have a flag, you know, in let's say, policy. And this year they actually ran into, you know, into quite controversy there, you know, like in their community. So I think it's really good that we are bringing this forward. And like there again, even though we, you know, that we haven't had problems, I think it certainly speaks to the fact that, you know, that we do have some clear direction here in place.
Anything else? All in favor? Thank you.
Next item I have, your worship, is the loitering and community standards bylaw. Drafted loitering bylaw was recommended by the RCMP to assist with the enforcement of individuals who are gathered in the city parks and parking lots to allow the members to fine those individuals who do not abide by the bylaws. Administration, along with the RCMP, reviewed the bylaws from other jurisdictions in Saskatchewan and Alberta and drafted a bylaw based on the City of Lacoon. The bylaw was also reviewed by the RCMP advisory committee members at the meeting held on June 12th. A draft of the bylaw was presented to city council at the May 20th committee of the whole meeting, as well as a result, the following changes have been incorporated into the new revised draft. We removed the curfew section of the bylaw, and also our solicitor reviewed the documentation, made a few minor technical changes, and we added a definition of loitering, as well as the 50% fine decrease if paid within seven days. And so recommending that it be given all three readings at this meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us. Who's prepared to start that reading? Counselor Beck?
Yes, I would like to adjust the motion here just slightly from what is presented. So I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2019-09, City of Warham Community Standards Bylaw, being, being a bylaw to regulate and prohibit certain activities in order to prevent and compel the abatement of noise, nuisances, unsightly premises, public disturbances within the City of Warham be given a first reading as amended. And I'll speak to the amendments, let's see, to the amendment coming forward.
Okay. Do we want to talk about the amended amendment before we second that?
You can second it and then...
Okay. Who wants to second? Counselor Phil Chuck? Okay, we can ask each other.
Yeah, so the amendments, on the very first line of this year, we do have the notation of, you know, let's say at the very end of the first line there, and to provide curfew for minors, for that there to be removed from the document.
Okay. Any other comments around that?
That was the same one I was going to bring up.
So that's the, yeah, so the resolution on the floor is with the amendment.
Okay, any other comments there? Hearing none, motions, all in favor? Okay, we have a second reading, motion, Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2019-09 be read a second time.
Any second there for that? Counselor Beck, any further, oh, yes?
I just, I'm just wondering, is this one that we need to have public input to? I guess we're doing all three readings, or it's proposed with three readings. I know that we've taken it to committee and all once, this is new sort of bylaw to the community. Does the community know about it, I guess? That's, I, that was my question, I saw all three readings tonight.
Yeah, it was just from, for no other reason than that's what we presented to committee at the whole, but it can certainly go first reading and then go have some discussion with the public, if that's what council so wishes.
Other comments? Okay, so then, all in favor of the second reading? Or are we going, so we have two in favor?
If you're calling a question.
Yeah, I was calling a question. All in favor of the second reading, so we have two, and not in favor, we have three. Okay, so then I guess it will go to, go for some public, public scrutiny first and come back for a second or third reading.
Is there any preference on what council would like to see for just advertised in the paper, or just through? Facebook would be fine, yeah. Just public, they get a chance to see it in comments before the next meeting. I'm fine, next council meeting that comes forward.
We could have picked, just, just so I'm, I'm straight with it, we could have passed the second motion and then just not passed to have three.
To do three, right, yeah, yeah.
Because I'm in favor of letting the public decide too. I just, I just thought I'll just pass the second motion and not, not have the third reading.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to finance manager.
Good evening, Mayor Spence and council. The first item I have in my report for you tonight is a 2018 audit of financial statements. Please find attached an appendix A, the December 31st, 2018 audit of financial statements as presented at the committee of the whole meeting by Deloitte. Some of the items that were seen within the financial statements were a little bit of a difference in revenues between what was budgeted and actual, and that was just due to the no revenue coming in from the offsite developments. Expenditures were pretty much bang on as had been budgeted, except for that amortization had not been budgeted, and then was of course included in the financial statements. Any other changes that we saw there? We saw a little bit of a decrease of about 3% in the financial assets, and that was directly related to accounts receivable having been collected, so that brought down the accounts receivable in the financial statements. Liabilities were down as well, and that was due to 2017 large AP carrying forward into 2018, and that didn't seem to be as much the case for 2018. The listing of accumulated surplus there, you can see how it's broken down per reserve. And the recommendation is that the December 31st, 2018 audit of financial statements be adopted at this regular meeting of council.
Please leave a motion in front of us. Counselor Tulley?
I'll make the motion that the audited financial statements for December 31st, 2018 be adopted.
Do you have a second for that? Counselor Peterson, is there further discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Next item?
The next item I have is the additional weigh bin. Residents in Warham receive one weigh bin per property with the cost of the service being covered through taxation. Currently, residents can request a second weigh bin at a cost of $8 per month. The cost of the second weigh bin was set by resolution back in 2012. Since this time, the cost of the City of providing the spin has increased to a cost of $12.50 per bin, including the fuel surcharge. Since the essential service of one weigh bin is remaining consistent, administration recommends that the cost of providing the second bin be extended to those utilizing the service, and the fee per household receiving the second bin increase from $8 per bin to $12.50 per bin effective August 1st, 2019.
Okay, leave a motion in front of us. Counselor Peterson?
I'd make the motion to increase the cost of renting an additional weigh bin from $8 per bin per month to $12.50 per bin per month, effective August 1st, 2019.
Do you have a second there? Counselor Beck, any comments? All in favor? Next item?
The next item I have is a utility bill being added to a property tax rule. Attached in appendix E is information regarding the past utility bill. Administration knows that the property in question is a rental property. The renter has moved out of this property, leaving an outstanding balance on the utility account. Attempts by administration to collect on this account with the renter have been unsuccessful, fulfilling directly with the renter and through coordination with the landowner. In accordance with Section 333 of the Cities Act, administration is requesting to apply the outstanding utility bill to the property tax rule. Administration recommends that, that council approve, administration to apply this outstanding utility balance to the related property tax rule at this regular meeting of council.
Okay, and you have a motion in front of us. Counselor Beck, second.
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion to apply the outstanding utility balance of utility account number 92313.023 to the related property tax rule as in accordance with Section 333, subsection 1 of the Cities Act.
Okay, then do it a second there. Counselor Phil Chuck, is there any further discussion there? All in favor? opposed? Next item?
The next item I have are the public accounts. Please find attached an appendix D, the 2018 public accounts. The schedule is, this schedule is required by the Cities Act to be adopted by city council on or before September 1st of the following year. The schedule incorporates elements of our 2018 audit of financial statements, as well as disclosed the city employee earnings more than $50,000, and expenditures by vendor more than $50,000. Administration recommends that the 2018 public accounts be adopted at this regular meeting of council.
So a motion, Counselor Shrum?
I would move that the public accounts for the fiscal year of 2018 be adopted by council.
Do you have a second there for that? Counselor Peterson, any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Mayor Spence, members of council, one item for discussion tonight. Zoning bylaw updates bylaw 2911. Since the adoption of our new zoning bylaw in 2018, planning and development has been keeping a running list of updates that would be recommended to council at a later date. All of the amendments are minor in nature and do not change the intent of the bylaw or any of the districts. Most of the amendments are adding new definitions the bylaw was lacking or altering existing ones to include new uses. In addition, some housekeeping around parking aisle dimensions is being recommended based on building code requirements by keeping the regulations consistent between bylaw and legislation. The bylaw is currently advertising for two consecutive weeks. The recommended, recommendation tonight is first reading. There was some discussion at committee of the whole regarding the setback for discretionary uses. I took some of the discussion back and did a little further research into it, had some discussions with some of my counterparts. There's a bit of a concern whenever you put a little bit of discretion into the setback. So the recommendation is that we either stay with the consistent 75 meters, or we go back to the 100 meters that we've had in the zoning bylaw since 2006. And the reason for this is when you treat one use one way and another use a different way, if it gets appealed at an SMB, and they say, well, why did you mail out 100 meters for this particular use and 75 for this particular one, it could catch us in a bit of a limbo. So, you know, either way, if we keep it at the 75 consistent with the legislation, or we go back to 100 meters, it's not really a huge deal for us, but the recommendation to council would be that we choose one or the other.
Okay, well, Counselor Shrum?
I would move that we keep it the original.
75?
We'll keep it at the original 100.
100.
That way, there's no controversy by moving it back, moving it to 75.
Okay.
And it's consistent.
And did we have a second there for that? Counselor Beck, is there further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
So we'll bring that back for second and third reading at the regular meeting of council on July 15th, 2019.
We probably should do...
We didn't have a...
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so, will, will you have first reading?
I had moved that the bylaw 2019-11, amendments to the zoning bylaw be read for the first time with the intent to hold a public hearing, followed by a second and third reading at the regular meeting of council on July 15th, 2019.
Do we have a second there for that? Counselor Peterson, is there further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Can we have a motion to file administration report, please? Counselor Tulley?
Make the motion that council approves the administration reports as presented for June 24th, 2019.
Second there? Counselor Phil Chuck, any further discussion? All in favor? Moving down to council reports. We have, you have in front of, in front of you the mayor's report, is there, there's no resolutions on there? Is there any questions on, that's on the report? I do want to say thank you to Deputy Phil Chuck for stepping in to that grand opening very last minute. Thank you so much for doing that. Okay, no questions? We'll move down to student council report.
So I have a few things in my report, the BMX opening night, I was there for a few minutes, not the whole night. While I was there, I saw some kids enjoying the new track. Scott was there with his fixing up others bikes when they wanted to go on track. Awards night was on Monday, June 18th, so we had students come in, there was a few, like, skipping students that were not there. Fortunately, parents were there watching, looking, I'll be there. So, we had, so, yeah, must have had some talk at home. We have this event for student economic clubs and sport achievements throughout the year, and it's nice seeing everyone smile, dressed up for their events on Monday. Finals are here, we are, we are almost done, we have one more final tomorrow for the grade elevens. Graduation is on Wednesday, Blood and Center. The carnival was fun, I was there, watching everyone go on. First two days it was pretty rainy, so there wasn't that much people out there, but on the last Sunday, there was quite a lot. Other than that, I had one recommendation was that for next year, we have it before June, so it doesn't affect finals.
The carnival?
The carnival, yeah. Because you want to be there the whole day, and if you're on the whole day, the whole day, you can't really study for your finals, so. Just drops that, other than that, that's, it was fun.
Does anyone have any questions with Karen Jeet?
Just a comment, I suppose with this year, we'd see how much sway that the City of Warham has with, with West Coast, you know, let's say, amusements, to see if we can get it changed, but I think that their, their schedule is pretty regimented, so, so you might have to just start studying earlier for your finals next year.
Okay, thank you, Karen Jeet. Okay, Counselor Beck? Oh, I guess maybe first a motion to, to file our two reports. Counselor Shrum?
I move to file as presented the mayor's and student council representative reports for June 24th, 2019.
Do you have a second there for that? Counselor Beck, any further questions? Last chance, last chance to quiz Karen Jeet, last report to council. All in favor? Great, okay, Counselor Beck?
Yes, so, two items to report on for me today, first one being the staff barbecue on June 13th. So, with this year, it was certainly like a very nice day to, you know, to have our staff out. It was kind of like that in-between day where we had like a little bit of overcast, but it was still warm, so nobody was sweating in the sun, and yet, you know, this year is still nice to be, you know, to be out and about. So I'd like to thank Bob Smith for looking after the barbecuing. I know I was a little bit late in showing up because I, I had a, let's say, a little bit of a meeting, and I know you and your team certainly kept me sidelined in that kind of thing, so I'd like to thank, you know, thank everybody there for stepping up to that and whatnot, but it certainly turned out to be a really great event, so thank you for stepping up on that, and thank you to the other counselors for their amendments. Last week, I did have a SUMA board meeting in Regina, so we certainly celebrated Keith Comstock and, you know, recognized his, his retirement from government relations, and, you know, with this year, he's certainly going to be missed, and, you know, there again, a well-respected personality, and, and certainly a friend for, you know, for SUMA and all, you know, municipalities out there for, you know, for what he's been able to bring to the government relations file, so certainly wanted to recognize that aspect. With the actual board meeting itself, just a few highlights, I'll bring more information later, but we did get a FCM presentation, we invited Brock Carlton, he's the CEO for, for FCM, so he basically, you know, spoke about the vision and the mission of, of FCM. And one of the things that they're really trying to do is really trying to, you know, to incorporate their values and, and to certainly make sure that even like the mid-size and the smaller communities are certainly are represented. So with that, it was certainly recognized of, of our, of our provincial representatives for the work that they do, and also for collecting, you know, the work originally and whatnot. So obviously with this year, Cheryl Spence certainly sits on that and whatnot, and, and, you know, certainly for bringing that forward, you know, with this year, it certainly empowers FCM, you know, to bring their mission, you know, to complete. So, so that was a very, very valuable thing, you know, certainly brought forward from that. So with this year, do you have a few other comments, however, I'll back that up with, with some further information later. We, you know, from the SUMA board meeting aspect, we certainly discussed our strategic, our strategic plan, we have an update and certainly like a directional statement update, you know, that will be coming forward, so I'll bring that forward here also. But one of the notes here from the legal requests in 2019, three top issues were identified by the legal department, and that is compliance, bylaw, and employment. So obviously those are the largest calls kind of, you know, coming into SUMA in terms of guidance towards communities, so, so yeah, so that kind of tops the legal requests here in 2019. Furthermore, the, some guidelines passed for SUMA duties, responsibilities, and attendance, and you'll see more of that towards the next AGM. So I think that's the conclusion of my, my report tonight.
Thank you, Richard. Counselor Tulley?
Yes. So the next council, regular council meeting, I'm going to be actually away on holidays, which I think also corresponds with the, the next Chamber of Commerce meeting, and so the next board meeting. So if somebody is going to be interested in attending that with me not being able to make it, we can, I can touch base with them and let them know that somebody else will be in attendance. So I think that meeting date for them is going to be July 8th. So it doesn't have to be here now, but if somebody is interested in attending, let me know, and I'll touch base with them just to double check tonight. I'm going to also check to see if they have a regular meeting scheduled throughout the summer, because I'm not 100% sure of that.
Maybe if you just send us an email and we'll get a volunteer that way.
I can do it that way. Perfect. That being said, I'm actually going to miss both of our meetings in July, we're going to be away on holidays. Over the weekend, on Friday evening, we had a chance in our household to attend the West Coast Amusements Midway, had lots of fun, even though we got rained on a little bit, but I think we still had, we still had lots and lots of good fun. On Friday as well, I, for a little bit attended, I didn't attend the walk, but I attended some of the program for the reconciliation event that was in Saskatoon. Counselor Phil Chuck and I, I think, kind of just missed each other from, he was leaving and I was going around the same time, so we didn't get a chance to connect, but I was there for a little bit. And was also able to attend the staff barbecue, and that was a fantastic turnout, and thank you very much to those of you that did the cooking and did some of the preparation behind the scenes, so that was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peterson?
Don't have a lot to report on. I do have one question, just because my calendar on here is kind of jumbled. I've got two committees of the whole and three regular, regular meetings of council.
For July?
Yeah, for July.
So you're busy.
Yeah. It's, the 8th is the committee of the whole and 15th, okay. That's why I just wanted to clarify that, because I, it's, there's some of the old ones that haven't been able to be deleted, so, but nothing, you all know.
Counselor Shrum?
I don't have much to add, as I've, again, say thank you to the, to our manager and his crew for our good barbecue, and being able to sit down and have a conversation with some of our Parks and Rec workers, city staff, it was great, enjoyed that. I too was on Friday at the carnival, and there was a guy with a beard there that is harassing me. He's over there on the other side of the table, but, yeah, I really thought it was success, you know, even with the rain, and so I, I look forward to seeing, I'm looking at the guy with the headscarf over there. But I thought it was a success and would look forward to seeing him come to return again. That's all I have, your worship.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Phil Chuck?
Again, a quick thank you for the barbecue, thanks for all the work putting together, I think I can show up and enjoy the time there. Had my meeting with Neil Sarnicki with P-4G, chance to sit down, and actually it was good, because he, we talked a little bit, I, since I've been there since the beginning, it sort of gave a different perspective a little bit along the way of where we started and where we are now and where he wants to take us, and, and seems like a really good leader in that area, so I'm looking forward to working with him. We had our reconciliation meeting in Aberdeen, the minutes should be out this week, and we had a presentation on missing and murdered Aboriginal women, and had a chance to see Aberdeen's rink to be used as a, as a roller blades or roller skates. Roller derby, like they, so person could skate around in there too. So it's interesting that they trying to bring the community together with something like that, but it's just, again, another way to use paved surfaces like that. Also Rocky Roots went to that, saw many people there, a great chance for networking, many, many people. It was, it's interesting how it's grown from going the first time where you really don't know a lot of people till now, it's, I know a lot of people because I was principal at least at one time, so I know some of the founding members of the Treaty Commission. So Harry LaFawn and Gilbert was there talking, and then many politicians I had a chance to talk to. Actually, I miss Kevin, but I was up talking to many people, I ended up staying a little bit longer, chatting more than anything, but good networking opportunities, if you ever get a chance, go just to get a chance, it's good morning of chatting, and really positive sort of vibe when you're there too, like it's very progressive. Then Bin Furniture, the opening for, I had the call in the afternoon about that, and it was very, it was interesting, because Bob was there too, and the, we weren't sure what, we were at, at the furniture store, we were looking around, and, and then all at once, we got moved over to the corner, corner lot there, and, and there's food and drink and, and a presentation, and she did a really good job, Bin Lee, did a really good job speaking and had interpreter there too, and had a chance to say a few words on behalf of Warham welcoming there, and they're very appreciative, like they didn't want you to leave without trying every bit of food, especially some of the raw stuff that was there, but I did, and it was good. Also had a chance, the West Coast Amusements stopped by, just to quick grab some cotton candy and talk to a few of our students who were there, and on Saturday night it was, and, and it was, it was good. It was quiet that night, Sunday seemed like the day that it was packed, and so I sort of disagree with Karen Jeet a little bit about the timing, because I think kids need time to get away from the books too. Can't study 12 hours in a row, you need your six hours of getting away from it, and so, so, and I think some teachers had study sessions anyway on those days, so it would have worked together anyway. And finally, even the RCMP meeting had that one last week too, so it, one, and Mayor Spence puts a few words about that one, but a little bit my apologies, I should have probably noticed that there about the bylaw, that we should have asked for the public there, so that was probably the point where I should have asked that question instead of here. I guess this meeting has not happened in about a year, I understand, and so it was nice to get us back together with Martinsville, and, and it started out a little bit of our complaints, but then it started to be, what are the solutions to that, and a lot of it was the reporting, making sure that we are reporting, but it, but there's also some creative ideas that I know Bob from Martinsville was coming up with every idea, from the signs of the radar guns to everything that, that looking at trying to deal with speeding and stunting and everything else, so some of the... So some of those, I think, we're looking at trying and at least entertaining the ideas of trying something a little bit different to deal with some of the things that are happening as far as speeding within our city. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving down to correspondence. We have in front of us three pieces of correspondence. The Saskatchewan Human Rights Commission 2019 Employment Equity Targets Letter for information. We have the Nancy Hepner MLA We Want to Hear From You letter. We put that in here. I didn't know if council wanted to put something on, something on that on behalf of us, but that's why it's there. And then the Saskatoon SAS Party Golf and Networking Event is also as a part of our correspondence. So does someone have, anyone have a motion to file our correspondence? Counselor Philchuck?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion of correspondence for June 24th, 2019. A letter from the Saskatchewan Human Rights Commission regarding 2019 Employment Equity Targets, the Nancy Hepner MLA We Want to Hear From You letter, and the invite to the Saskatoon SAS Party Networking Event Premiers Tournament 2019 be filed as read.
Do we have a second here? Counselor Sharon? Is there any discussion on any of those pieces? Counsel Philchuck?
I guess the first one, the human rights one. Are we, I see the numbers there. Are we doing anything with that as a city and with our HR? In that area, is that something?
Our HR generalist is aware of the, of the letter and is aware of the targets. I don't know how we sit in regards to the targets, but if that's something that council would like to have, but together we can certainly do that as well.
That's, I'd like to see that. So where is the city of Mormon right now compared to the specific targets? Because they're very specific, and I think that it's well laid out. And whether we agree or disagree, it's, you know, this is now by provincial averages and as the one that at least where do we stand? And it would even be nice, I guess, at some point to know what is our population breakdown? Because some of that, I think, would be the last census and there'd be some changes, but I think that is available, isn't it?
The, it is for the 2016 census, but we're not a large enough area to have that.
That break.
Okay.
So we might even be able to help with the schools that way to do some of that, but.
Yeah, but does the schools have?
Some of that, probably not specific to these areas, but we probably could. I'm not sure. Have to check with the privacy, how that all works though, for sure. And one more point about the Nancy Hepner one. Now, who is that sent to? Is that sent to city council or is that to individuals or?
It was in my mailbox.
Okay. So we didn't all get that?
No, I got one.
I got one at home, at home, but that one, this one came into my mailbox, my council mailbox, so.
Okay, I don't think I got one at home, but it never made it home.
They're also circling online too, like through Facebook. I know there's, I know they're out there.
Okay, and I guess that's why I was asking, is it an individual then feedback? It's not us as, you know, we wouldn't be doing, representing the city, of course. We do it as individuals and put our names on there if we choose to do it.
That's if you want to do that.
Right, right.
Want to do it the other way, we could too.
Okay, okay. And just about the SAS Party Golf, when I, I don't think that'd be something that we, because it's a particular party that you, it's either all or none of them.
Yeah. Any other comments about any of these? Okay, all in favor then? We're moving down to communications. Oh, no, I missed other reports. We'll just come and join us, so Aaron, I'll just go through other reports first. So under other reports, we have the RCMP media report that's in front of us, and we need a motion. Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that the RCMP media report for June 10th to 17th, 2019 is accepted and filed as read.
Do we have a second here for that? Counselor Beck, is there any comments or? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Good evening. My report is fairly short tonight. It's just some information about social media activity last week. Just given the timing of the meetings, I couldn't really put together more data for you, but it's just there for your information. So I'm not sure if anyone has any feedback on that. Any questions?
Okay. Is there anything else that you wanted to bring up, Aaron?
Just that our recent business visits have gone very well. And I think the chiropractor office last week was a big hit. Played place today.
It's really, it's always really nice to see youth that were at one time youth in Mormon and grew up in Mormon, become a successful business owner and professional. It's just, it's always really nice to see that. It's definitely happened with the chiropractor's office, so.
And this is where also the bylaw, so that bylaw that's going to go up, because we have a fairly quick turnaround here. So that, if that can be put out on Facebook too and.
Yeah, I've sent an email to Dawn asking her to start putting something together.
Yeah, and then Aaron, you'll just, I don't know, I guess you'll have to work with Dawn and the city manager about what that looks like on Facebook. Okay, good. Anything else to bring to Aaron's attention or any comments?
Just a comment, you know, certainly this year, I'm with the report that you do bring forward. You know, I'm like, it is, you know, certainly nice to see like the reach and the engagement that we do have with our followers. So, yeah, you know, this year, I'm like, I do always, you know, I like enjoy seeing that report come forward, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Thanks.
Okay, so.
I'm going to declare an interest at this point?
Oh, first, we have a motion for the communications report, so if someone want to make a, make the motion there?
I think I already did.
Counsel Tilly?
No, it's not communications.
No, we didn't make the communication.
I'll make the motion to accept and file the communications report for June 24th, 2019.
Okay, and a second here? Counsel Beck, is there further, any further discussion there? All in favor? Okay, now Counselor Peterson declares his interest. Moving down to city accounts. We have city accounts for approval. Motion, please? Counsel Philchuck?
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve the city accounts presented by checks numbered 20,255 to 20,352 for the total amount of $767,483.44 and the payroll vouchers numbered 8,999 to 9,077 in the amount of $99,501.88 for June 24th, 2019.
Second here, Counsel Sharon? Any questions of these? Can you hear in that? All in favor? Okay. I guess someone can let Counsel Peterson in.
And a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion to adjourn this June 24th, 2019, regular meeting of council.
And a second here? Counsel Sharon, all in favor? Good, thank you. And we're staying around for a little bit until.